We have exactly forty. Forty-two.
Glory, hallelujah. Close the doors and lock them. Having a quorum present. As the town moderator, I hereby call and make the order that was in recess from our previous Monday night. At this moment, would everyone stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. I'd like to have a moment of silence for our military members that are serving both at home and abroad, and especially those who've laid down their lives for us. I'd also ask that you remember our friends in France from the recent tragedy that has happened there. And also, I would like for you to remember Brooks Hendrick, a member of this community and a member of the Finance Committee who passed away not too long ago. His contribution and his service is truly going to be missed. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce a couple of people. Jim Shanahan. Would you stand up, Jim? Jim is our new town accountant. As all of you know, Marilyn Matthew retired recently, or is retiring, and Jim is now going to be our town accountant. Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you very much.
Alan Demmberger is the back here. He's our superintendent of the Blackstone Millville Regional School District. Thank you for being here tonight. Also, Peter Mello of Petrenian Associates, our town council. Mr. Barrett, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, will you introduce your board and the Executive Secretary, please?
To my right is Captain Coffin, our Executive Secretary, and to my left is Joe Repulso, the Vice Chair, and Jennifer Dean-Wing, who's not here tonight. Oh, she is in the back, sorry. And next to her is John Laura, and then Bob Baker at the end.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Savello, Chairman of the Finance Committee, would you introduce your members?
Good evening, everyone. With me tonight is Paul O'Leary, newest member of the Finance Committee. Mike Foster can't be here tonight. He's tied up in Boston to get through the traffic.
I am desperately looking for people to serve on the Finance Committee, as is the Board of Selectmen looking for people to serve on other committees and boards. It's really astonishing that we can't get our residents out to volunteer some of their time. I realize that some of these boards and committees take a lot of time, but this is our town. We try to keep it afloat. We try to keep it moving forward. We try to make it the best little town in the state of Massachusetts, if not in the country. We cannot do that unless our members of our community step forward and carry a little bit of the weight on their shoulders. So therefore, I'm asking you, if you're interested in serving on the Finance Committee or know someone who might be, please contact me. You can find my name and my address and my telephone number on the web, on the homepage of the Millville webpage. You can also contact the Executive Secretary any time during the day. Just, or just drop by Town Hall and say you're interested. Think about it. Talk to your fellow residents, your neighbors, and let's see if we can't get some people out. In your package, you'll find, one, a list of town officials. You'll also find available funding sources for the special town meeting, and you will also find the Finance Committee's recommendations for this meeting for each and every article. So let's get the show on the road, and I'll try to get you as home as quickly as possible. Article One, Monetary Increases. To see if the town will vote to authorize that any motion or amendment to increase any monetary article or line items as approved by the Finance Committee presented at this town meeting shall be out of order unless such motion or amendment states the source of funding as being from available free cash or the line item or article that will be reduced by the same amount or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Finance Committee. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Board of Selectmen.
And the Board of Selectmen also recommends the article as written.
Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. I'm sorry. My apologies. If anybody wants to say it there real quick? Joe? Joe Repulso. Let's do it again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Two, Prior Year Unpaid Bills. To see if the town will vote to transfer three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, no, three hundred and fifty-seven and... Three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents from ambulance fund expenses account number 0031-000-5780-00 for the payment of unpaid bills of previous fiscal years pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 64, or take any other action relative thereto submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Do you move the article?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen recommend the article as written.
Do you move the article?
Yes, sir.
All right. Second.
Second.
John? Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee, your recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is a two-thirds vote, or nine-tenths vote needed for passage. Therefore, I want to ask you, if you're in favor of it, to raise your hand. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Those opposed, raise your hand. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Three, Fiscal Year 2015 Budget Adjustment, Snow and Ice. To see if the town will vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the ambulance fund expenses account number 0031-000-5780-00 to supplement highway-snow-and-ice account number 0001-300-5780-03 within the fiscal year 2016 town budget approved under Article Nine of the Annual Town Meeting warrant on May 11, 2015, or take any other action relative thereto. Chairman of the Finance Committee, your recommendation, and do you want to move the article?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written. Make a motion to move the article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by the Chairman of the Finance Committee and seconded at the hall? Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Four, Fiscal Year 2016 Budget Adjustment, Police Department. To see if the town will vote to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from insurance-medical insurance account number 0001-196-5740-01 to fund police department-part-time officer salaries account number 001-210-5114-01 within the fiscal year 2016 town budget approved under Article Nine of the Annual Town Meeting warrant on May 11, 2015, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Barrett, do you want to move the article and make your recommendation?
Yes. Board of Selectmen recommend the article as written, and also would like to move the article.
Is there a second? John? John Laura, seconded. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee, your recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Thank you. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Five, Fiscal Year 2016 Budget Adjustment, Board of Health. To see if the town will vote to transfer four thousand dollars from the ambulance fund expenses account number 0031-000-5780-00 to fund Board of Health Rubbish Collection account number 0001-210-5114-01 within the fiscal year 2016 town budget approved under Article Nine of the Annual Town Meeting warrant on May 11, 2015, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Savello, would you want to make a recommendation? Move the article?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written. Make a motion to move the article.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Selectmen, your boards' recommendation?
Yes. Our board's recommendation is to also accept this article as written.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Six, Fiscal Year 2016 Budget Adjustment, Education. To see if the town will vote to transfer ten thousand dollars from insurance recovery expenses account number 0088-000-5780-00 to fund education, North Fork Aggie Transportation account number 0001-300-5780-04 within the fiscal year 2016 town budget approved under Article Nine of the Annual Town Meeting warrant on May 11, 2015, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Rowland?
Board of Selectmen recommends the article as written, and also would like to move the article.
Is there a second?
Second.
John Laura, second. Mr. Savello, the Finance Committee's recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Seven, Fiscal Year 2016 Budget Adjustment, Fire Salaries. To see if the town will vote to transfer ten thousand seventy-three dollars from insurance recovery expenses account number 0088-000-5780-00 to fund fire department part-time firefighters/ EMTs account number 0001-220-5114-01 within the fiscal year 2016 town budget approved under Article Nine of the Annual Town Meeting warrant on May 11, 2015, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Savello, the Finance Committee, remove the article and make your recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written. Make a motion to move the article.
Second.
Paul O'Leary, seconded. Mr. Chairman, the Board of Selectmen, your recommendation, please?
The Board of Selectmen also recommends the article as written.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Eight, Collective Bargain Agreement, Firefighters. Fiscal Year 2015 to Fiscal Year 2018. To see if the town will vote to transfer three thousand dollars from the ambulance fund expenses account number 0031-000-5780-00 to fund salary increases and other cost items associated with implementing the collective bargaining agreement between the town of Millville and Teamsters Local 170 Firefighters Union effective July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2018, or take any other action in relation thereto. Barrett?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen recommends the article as written, and would also like to move the article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Say you, Joe.
John.
Oh, John? Mr. Savello, the Finance Committee's recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Thank you. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Number Nine, Establish and Fund Other Post-Employment Benefits Fund. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 32b, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Laws as amended, which provides that a town may establish a separate trust fund to be known as Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund, to reduce the unfunded actual liability of health care and other post-employment benefits, or take any other action in relation thereto. Mr. Barrett, Board of Selectmen would like to move this article and make a recommendation.
Yes, Board of Selectmen recommends the article as written, and would like to move the article.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Baker? Seconded. Mr. Savello, Finance Committee's recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Motion's been made and seconded. Everybody know what this article's about? Anybody want any discussion on it, or an explanation? Finn, you request one? Barrett, could you elaborate on this, or can someone elaborate on it?
Helen's more educated with this than myself, or Executive Secretaries.
There you go. Mrs. Coffin, would you...
Mr. Moderator, the explanation, really, on the special town meeting warrant pretty much says it all. This is a law that was approved a couple of years ago. It's a Mass. General Law, which requires that towns start saving, if you will, for post-employment benefits of retirees. So each year, you'll see that we fund within the town accountant's line item an OPEV audit. And what that does is allows the treasurer to work with an outside consultant to audit our employees, calculate what the funding will be needed for those people when they retire from the town's employment. So that's been done for the past, I think, three or four years. And as the explanation says, our liability at this point is about one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So it's about time that we really need to start funding that. We had not even created the line item yet. So what this article is doing, it's allowing us simply to create the line item. We're actually not funding it this evening. The Board of Selectmen will start funding that in May. And that's really about it.
Everybody understand that? Any more questions? Everybody satisfied? Yes. Mr. Finn, come to the mic, please. Say your name.
Jerry Finn, 47 Grove Street. Question I've got is the amount of one hundred and forty-five thousand. Is that, I know there's a legal case going on right now on unfunded mandates like this from the state, where they were asking for some forgiveness on this, so you don't have to pay back on it. In other words, you could forward, progress it, and you could take and say, okay, say that's a three-year total. You could actually say, a third of that going forward, we will fund. But there is, there's a Senate bill in right now, because this isn't the only town that can hit with this. A lot of towns did. And because of that, they all went, and there was a, I think it was the day before Veterans Day, they actually had a meeting in the Senate chambers to try to make that recommendation, because other towns were hit with a lot bigger money than this. And they had asked that they could go and have forgiveness for what has not been paid past, but to start funding forward. I was just wondering if that's something anybody has considered on that?
Well, Town Council can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's what we're doing. We're actually funding forward. We're not going to fund the entire one hundred and forty-five thousand in May. I think our goal was ten to twenty percent. But many towns are simply funding five percent or even less. So to my understanding, we're not required to fully fund this, but it will affect our bond rating if we don't. So how that comes into play, I cannot answer that question. I hope Mr. Mello can add to that at all, but...
So it's actually just a percentage of that?
Yeah, just to clarify, we're not looking to fund the one forty-five. You know, I think ten percent was the board's, you know, minimum goal, depending on what the free cash is and what the budgets are looking like. You know, Finance, I'm sure, will provide a recommendation to the board at that point, and that'll probably be in April.
Anyone else? Being none. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Ten, Establish PEG Access and Cable-Related Fund. To see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53f and 3/4 of the Massachusetts General Laws to establish a separate revenue account to be known as the PEG Access and Cable-Related Fund for funds received in connection with the franchise agreement between the town and the cable operator, which funds can be appropriated only for cable-related purposes as set forth in the statute, or take any other action relative thereto. Mr. Savello, Finance Committee, you want to move the article and make a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written. Make a motion. The article will be moved as well.
Second.
Mr. Barrett, the Board of Selectmen's recommendation, and could you explain this one a little bit?
The cable revenue from cable, all your bills, we get a percentage of that revenue. And the PEG cable people are a lot more adverse with this than I am, but the PEG account, we have every year, a percentage of the revenue from cable goes to the school. And what is left out of that revenue is all money that can, as it says here, only be spent on cable-related repairs and then improvements to our system. And so this separate line item would be to even define parts of that budget even more towards PEG-related stuff and then repairs, if I'm not correct.
It's a funding source for capital equipment. That's basically where it is. It doesn't come out of your, from your bill. Basically, it's a grant, essentially a grant award to the child, so that people like Tim and Jesse can have equipped, you know, to be able to plan for equipping to run the cable access program. What happened in last year, the state changed the law that all that money was designated strictly for cable use. And now they've, it's been changed so that that money can be taken and put into general funds, and then therefore, the school education for the children in media would suffer, and then also our own cable system would suffer when we needed improvements. So this, if we don't accept this tonight, then going forward, when this law is in effect for next fiscal year, that money goes directly to general funds.
I don't normally speak on articles, but I just wanted to clarify something. All of you, if you look around this room, the microphones that are here now, and if you look back at the cameras, we have one here, one in that corner, one back there where Tim is standing. We even have one in the opening back there. If you want to take a look at, when you get ready to leave today, at all the equipment that's back behind that partition back there, this town didn't have that for many, many, many years. And I think, if you think back about how our town meetings were ran, and even the Board of Selectmen's meetings in the Town Hall, with all the new equipment that they now have, how much more access you as residents have via your TV and other electronic resources than we did, we didn't even have three, four years ago. So this is what this is for. Motion been made and seconded?
I have a second, yes.
I had one from Mr. Savello. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion on it, or explanation needed? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes, all those in favor, all those opposed, we say nay. The ayes have it. It is a vote, and I so declare. Article Eleven, Stabilization Fund. To see if the town will vote to amend the motion voted and approved under Article Eight of the Annual Town Meeting warrant on May 11, 2015, to vote to fund the stabilization fund from free cash in the sum of thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars and nine cents, or take any other action... or take any other action relative thereto, submitted by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Barrett?
The Board of Selectmen recommends the article as written, and would also like to move this article.
Second? Roll his hand, Mr. Barrett, seconded. Mr. Savello, Finance Committee's recommendation, please, sir.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold off a minute. This call for two-thirds vote on this article since it's coming from a stabilization fund. All those in favor, raise your hand, please. Thank you. Those opposed, raise your hand. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Article 12, Revolving Funds. To see if the town will vote to create and/or reauthorize the revolving funds for certain town departments pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 53e and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, as follows. I think all of you have it, but we have here cable access programs was the revolving fund. Spending authority was the Cable Access Committee. Does everybody have this in front of you? And is there anyone who feels I need to read it all? No? Anybody wants me? Remember who said that? Okay? I know his boss. Okay? First line item, revolving fund. Under the revolving fund category, cable access programs, spending authority, cable access committee, revenue source, charter communication fees, use of funds, costs related to operating the local cable channels. Fiscal year sixteen, fiscal year limit was sixteen thousand, it's been crossed out, raised to twenty-five thousand. It was ten thousand dollars, it's been crossed out, raised to twenty-five thousand. Police Department, Chief of Police and Fire. Firearms and fingerprinting fees. I want everybody to run there and get your fingerprints done. Costs related to providing both services. It was a thousand dollars, they're raising it to six thousand dollars. Police Department, Chief of Police and Fire, cruiser detail fees. Police vehicle maintenance and expenses, five thousand dollars. Senior Center, Council on Aging, fundraising donations, and van ridership fees. Van-related maintenance and expenses, it was five thousand dollars, they're raising it to ten thousand dollars. Mr. Savello, Finance Committee's recommendation, please.
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends the article as written, and make a motion to move the article.
Mr. Savello and Paul. Mr. Barrett, Board of Selectmen's recommendation, please, sir.
Board of Selectmen recommends the article as written.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Mr. Wayne?
Motion's been dissolved, the warrant.
Motion's been made to dissolve the warrant, is there a second?
Seconded.
Oh, oh, yeah, seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Olef. Mr. Olef, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, it is a vote, and I so declare. Thank you so very much for coming out tonight. Good to see you.